I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Did you have a chance to take a look at the minutes from February 27? There are no corrections or additions. Our view is to motion to approve the minutes. Moved by Smith, seconded by Goodman, those in favor, certified by Lisa Rice, and inspired by the Board of Works and Safety Mean February 14th and the 28th are included in your package for information purposes. We don't have any candidations, no public hearings tonight, no unfinished old business, so we'll move right into the new business. We have a request for a permit fee waiver for the Rochester Little League and Times Theater. Those representatives here.
No.
You're going to present a case.
I have papers on that form.
Are you doing this instead of coaching this year?
Yes.
In lieu of coaching?
Totally. No one wants to be as stressed as me. I'm more of a fan. That's the other thing. So, I'm not sure how this looks on the agenda. We'll start with the Little League. The Rochester Little League, they are renewing their concession stand, remodeling the interior. They are going to be moving the exterior stairs. This would be a concession stand by the major minor field. And so they're removing those exterior stairs, replacing those, they're remodeling it, the interior a little bit, they're going to be putting on metal siding and metal roof, and then they're replacing the fence in the outfield with a fence that looks very similar to the existing one, but will be a little bit easier for them to maintain, and then they'll be replacing the signs, which, I'm not a good one to talk about that, but they're replacing it with a different material. So the signage will still be there, the sponsorship will still be there, but they just don't need the same material. They would require a building permit for the fencing and for the stairs, siding and the roof does not require it, but then depending on how extensive they get on the inside remodel, that would. So they are requesting a fee waiver ordinance for that.
Now, I have to tell you, those stairs were brand new when Councilman Smith and I were 12 years old running up and down. Yeah, they were pretty nice.
They have us a long time. Can anybody do that match?
Yeah. The signage, I mean, those signs, it's kind of almost like, that's the flavor for them. The league goes way, 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 way back. Will the new signings replicate that?
I think they're trying to. I think that's the whole point, but then I think they also, they must have had a request with, Freddie would, Matt Reinhards would be a better person to explain this, so I'll call it as they get it wrong, but my understanding, they must have had a request for maybe a sponsor that had a child, a friend, a grandchild on one of the other leagues, that they wanted to move the sponsorship to a different, you know, location, you know, to kind of support their teams, you know, their child, grandchild's teams. So I think the idea is that, you know, they can be moved, you know, if they want to be, if they need to be, you know, it's also a lot more cost effective than the previous material, so they can actually go out and retain more sponsors, hopefully, because it will be more cost effective. So I think they really looked at it in depth and they understand the nostalgia, nostalgia and, you know, the love everybody has for that look, but they're trying to duplicate it in a little bit more cost effective friendly way, and then also a way to, you know, integrate it into the other teams.
Yeah, those four by H needs supply, we're always fun to work with.
Right.
Okay, any questions for Casey?
Are we doing these one at a time?
However you want to do it, Councilman Smith.
At that time, I'd make a motion to approve the waiver for the Rochester Little League.
Motion made by Smith, seconded by Yerick, those in favor, certified by Lisa Rice.
And then the Rochester Times Theater, they would like to, they would like to get an electrical permit. What they'd like to do is maybe to start showing movies again in there, having a fence in the theater, and one of the things we've requested is to make sure that the essentials are taken care of and the electrical, making sure it's safe to actually run a concession stand, and then also the emergency lighting for the exits. If there's anything a movie in here, we want to make sure that, barring any unforeseen circumstances, you know, people can see their way out. And so they are actually going to be doing a little bit of a live port, nothing major, replacing those emergency exits with battery backup exit signs, and then also checking on the outlets and replacing them as they need them, maybe putting in a G M I if it's close to water, that type of thing. So the electrical permit is $20. Every $20 helps in your nonprofit, so they'd like to ask for a fee waiver for the electric.
Are they keeping the existing service?
Yeah, they're not messing with the service at all, just outlets and the exit light.
Make motion.
Second.
Moved by Yerick, certified by Roger, those in favor, five zero.
Great. Thank you very much. Does anyone have anything else to make?
Well, Casey, you want to give, why do you, you want to give a quick update on the waivers, et cetera?
Sure, I spoke to both the surveyor, that is dealing with the plan surveyor, architect over there, and as well as the owner today. He left, we missed each other, he left me a message, returning my call from last week, and basically the engineer is working on the plans right now, and what Mr. Breckie said is that basically they had other sites that they were finishing up, and so Wright Coller are very excited about Rochester, and they have started to work on Rochester diligently. They were trying to figure out how to get a deck onto the restaurant and onto the same lot, so they're trying, you know, trying to get everything in that they can, and he was very excited about it, and the architect was just moving slow. Got geared up, and he said hopefully we'll start to see plans moving.
I'm going to burn next time. Anything else for Casey? Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Okay, the next on the agenda was clarification of City Code 99.01B, open burning. This is the Elks Golf Course Request.
As you all know, I'm Jan Sawyer, I'm the treasurer, I'm the treasurer of the Elk 2120. Good evening. I'm going to give you a history lesson first, because we don't just sit out there and drink beer and play golf. Although we do do that too. But we don't just do that. Five Rochester residents just decided to obtain ground in order to build a golf course in this area. These men were A.J. Denniston, Percy Smith, H.G. Young, H.G. Miller, and Charles Emmons. If you've been around long enough, you might recognize some of these names.
I actually threw away some of their stock certificates when I followed that. They all had ownership in the country club.
Yes.
They sold them stock certificates.
Starting as a country club, exactly. They obtained 20 acres of Holden Farm on the east side of the lake, and through their efforts, play began late May 1916, on six fairways and six greens made of tamsing. Interesting, I found that extremely interesting. Golf course has been in continuous play for nearly 103 years. It's among the oldest courses in the state of Indiana. It's older than French Lick by one year. It's pretty unusual to have a golf course that old in your community, and it's something our community should embrace. 60 years ago, in 1959, the course was incorporated as part of the Elks Lodge. The course has been a part of the Rochester community for a very long time, and as far as I know, we are the only golf course in the area within the city limits that's operated by a nonprofit organization. An unusual circumstance, an unusual circumstance. Golf course is the source of income for the Elks. And with this income, in 2018, we provided scholarships to area school students that totaled $4,500. Our community giving included contributions to the RHS wrestling and football programs, Kids Bridge Program, Junior Achievement, United Industries Basket Program, Christmas Basket Program, Fulton County Animal Adoption Center, area scouts and cub scouts, boys scouts and cub scouts, Field of Dreams, that's in Patterson Scholarship Fund, Fulton County Council on Aging, Rochester Fireworks, Compassionate Care, Northern Indiana Community Foundation and Camp What You Want to Do. That actually is a state-run camp, but we sponsored four students from our area to go there, so it's for special needs. So we're very diverse in our giving. That was a total of $1,150 this year. Our most active members also provide 318 hours of community service to other area programs. Statewide, we contribute to the Pray of Nichols that supports our veterans, the Elks Drug Awareness Program, and our E N F funds have gone for cancer research at both IU and Purdue that have totaled over $7 million last year. The Elks has needed property to the city where the water tower now sits, and then later we extended that property because it was discovered that the fence extended the original property that was given, so we gave that property also. Of course, the pin, so we are a good community helper. The golf course depends on our volunteers. Pro shop, spring cleanup, and fall cleanup are completely run by volunteers. We do hire two and a half people for maintenance of the course and for maintenance of the golf course during the, golf parks during the season. Why am I here? The Elks does not benefit from city leaf pickup or tree branch removal. The area residents do, but the Elks does not. For us to hire leaf and limb removal would be a hardship on our budget and our contributions. However, we are not asking the city to pick up our leaves or our limbs, but because this golf course is also within the city limits, we are not allowed to burn at this time for limbs and leaves only. We are asking that the city council include the golf course in their definition of unusual circumstances and grant us permission to burn limbs and limbs only. We don't burn trash, we have trash removal. We have dumpster. Board of Works member Rick Figlia, when we went before the Board of Works, expressed a concern about opening a can of worms and that the area residents would want to burn also. There's no reason for them to burn. They have the service, they have leaf pickup, they have limb removal, there's no reason for them to burn unless they too would have an unusual circumstance, such as a tornado or something, and then of course they can come before the board and ask permission also. So I don't feel that there's a can of worms to be opened.
So, Jan, I listened to that recording, I wasn't there. I believe he was also concerned of the clarification of an unusual circumstance. Well, I mean, you want to know where that, the Board of Works is the statutory side of the city. They enforce the laws, the rules, the regulations. This group writes the, is the judicial part of the equation that writes the ordinances and the zoning regulations and such, and part of that is based on home rule and part of it's based on Indiana statutes. And Rick made a comment that is an unusual circumstance, your circumstance, or is it a tornado?
I think it should be done individually. Why do you have to have a blanket statement for all? Each person comes forward and asks for it as an unusual circumstance?
Well, I thought it was a good question, because our ordinance is 33 years old. There's never been an unusual circumstance granted. We've tried to figure out, because this group, nobody was around 33 years ago to make that determination as to work the ordinance in law. So we went to the I D E M, the state Indiana statute, and it's almost, our ordinance reads like crib sheets from the state. Is that not true during Perkins?
Our ordinance is pretty brief. The Indiana Administrative Code, something the mayor and I discussed today, does provide some similar definitions if you wanted to look to that. As written in the City Code, it gives the Board of Works a lot of discretion. Any ordinance that's vague allows more discretion. The risk of, the benefit of vagueness is you get to fashion a remedy to protect the individual facts. The drawback is that it can be so vague, it can, it can be called a night for lack of guidance, a lack of notice on you. So the state statutes permit I D E M to draft rules. When you hear about rulemaking, usually they're in the federal one, book camp is state number two. So the General Assembly passed a statute, one of the statutes they passed is called an enabling ordinance, an enabling statute. An enabling statute is what creates and authorizes a department of the state, a department of the executive, in this case I D E M, to write rules, and the rules, they not passed by the General Assembly, have essentially the effect of law. And there's a period that people can, whenever they modify those rules, people, they have to open up for public comment, so forth and so on. So within I D E M's regulations for burning, there's a definition of emergency burning. Now, emergency burning, word for word, isn't the same as unusual circumstances, but I think it's somewhat instructive, is if you wanted to say, well, what might the Board of Works, and I say might, because you're not bound by it, but what might the Board of Works look to for guidance for unusual circumstances? You could look to I D E M's definitions of emergency burning, because within I D E M's regulations, there is an exception for emergency burning, and so that's why they have that. It says, "Emergency burning means burning of clean wood waste or deceased animals caused by natural disaster or uncontrolled events such as the following: tornado, high winds, earthquake, explosion, hailstorm, rainstorm, ice storm." So that, again, I want to stress, Board of Works is not currently bound by that definition, but if this council wanted to specify unusual circumstances, that might be one source that it looks to. What I D E M has formulated for emergency, it could reformulate the ordinance to provide other things, right? Or it could not change it at all. It could say, well, that's up to the Board of Works, and they can decide, you know, however they want to decide. But what the mayor and I kind of discussed this afternoon was the relationship between I D E M and its rules and how those might be applicable. Sometimes, sometimes courts, when they're looking to form a definition that doesn't exist in statute, might look to other definitions and other parts of the law within that jurisdiction, or similar definitions. And so I just thought I would point that out, that that's not binding on our city ordinance, but I D E M has gone through the trouble of rulemaking and creating some definitions. That's one of them. That might have been the kind of unusual circumstances post, a post-natural disaster type of unusual circumstances. And it wasn't. I wasn't hearing any of that when they did that version, so, but that's kind of.
When I D E M allowed burning on Fourth Street, I believe that went through I D E M, and you burned it, the city took their refuse, burned it, that's not been that long ago.
We've been shut down. It was six months ago, I D E M visited us, we burned nothing anymore. That's the thing, in the last two years, we've seen I D E M three times because of different complaints, and so we had, we had just, you know, we don't even go out to the county and burn anything, the city just doesn't burn any longer.
That's too bad.
Well, it is, because, I mean, the farmers do get some leeway. We've spoken with I D E M, that's the other thing, I D E M does have jurisdiction over this. If this group would do.
What is I D E M's solution to getting rid of your debris? What's their solution? I mean, they give you the rules, what's the solution?
You have to handle it in another manner, it's a non-burn.
What would be?
Grinding and creating mulch, you know, burying, that type of situation. The, we called for some clarification relative to their statute, because they said, okay, there's, they shut us down, and now this is pretty close to our statute, so it probably came into play ours because of theirs, and even if we would grant you under our local ordinance of special circumstance to do that, they would also have to grant you a special circumstance.
I was kidding, Jan, but let's just, let's drift away from the burn atmosphere of this and get that word out of the, out of the contextual thing, because the city used to, just on kind of, let's help another at a time with it. It wasn't that many times. I can speak of this because I live near, I walk by the area, I know what's going on. And when sometimes they would put the stuff along the side of the road, along Park Road there, and the city at their leisure, when there was time, would pick it up and haul it away, just to get the burning out of the way. They don't have to burn, they just want it, they just want it to go away, in any, in any way that it can. And it was over on Park Road, and the city at their time, we used to do that. I mean, we used to do that. It's kind of a, I'm not saying it was, I thought it was okay, because it was kind of a good, you know, you know, helping, helping somebody out that helps the community. The Elks is not the strongest, you know, club in the world, that we're struggling out there, but still doing a good job and contributing to the city in a lot of ways. It just to put that stuff along the side of Park Road and for the city to pick it up, that's, that's the option that gets us the word burn out of everybody's, out of everybody's.
And that, that happened in the first year of my administration. We had a pile out there that went halfway down the road over on the water tower site, so I don't know how long that had been collecting, but it was there for some time, and I was asked to send the city people out to take care of that. Just coming into office after controversy over ghost employment, improper use of city assets and such, very, very cautious as to what we do with our city resources. But I had an ex-mayor, an ex-mayor cook came to me and said, isn't there anything we could do? You know, back in the day, we did all this. I said, I don't want to do that with city resources. There are lots of people in the city of the 6200 that are Elks members. Although I am an Elks member, and I haven't, I haven't done a donation in some time, so I told him, I said, I will take care of it personally to get rid of that pile, but I can't do it with city assets. So I contracted David Jackson. It cost me $3,000. So, I mean, it's, it's not, when it comes up, it's not a small type of job, it's a pretty decent job. It's a golf course. We don't grind our own golf stuff. We just hired David Jackson not too long ago to take care of our pile, but we had developed our leaves, we mulch, we don't, so we don't, we don't use city resources to take care of the city golf course and that.
Well, who paid for them to mulch at the city? Who hired Jackson?
The golf, the golf course personnel, that's city, that's a city.
Yeah, so you have those funds.
Sure, just as we do the swimming pool and park.
It's part of paying taxes, as I understand.
No, it's the city property, it's the city responsibility.
Well, that's where you get your money from, love to do that.
Sure, sure.
And we don't have that. We don't have that base, that, that.
You're surprised.
Property base, yeah, or that base.
So that's, that's.
Well, I, we're really not asking for indiscriminate burning. We don't just want to go out there and burn every day. We'd like to burn three days in the spring and two in the fall to clean up the course. It is a golf course, and we have set aside three areas that are within, none of those areas are within 100 yards of residential. And you have to look for it. One, two. We would coordinate with the fire department, would you burn? Obviously, we wouldn't burn on windy days, and no fires would be, no fires are ever left unattended, and we don't expect the fire department to stand there, because we have people who do that. And burning on the course is a lot easier, because we have people who live around the course, and it's just a lot easier to be out there. We can also post that we have notice of permission to do that. So I'm still asking for a permission to burn, limited, in order to help the course. It's been a part of this community for 103 years. I'd hate to see it go down the tube, but it's actually part of, it's part of our community, has been for a long time. And like John said, it's, times are tough with all lodges, because it's just, that's just the way it is right now.
When I had Monty Barnes approach me at a meeting the other night, and said he had given permission for the Elks to drag the stuff half a mile over to his property and burn, which he's in the county. And did you take advantage of that Saturday, or was that?
But actually, Ken Mills is the one, he's a little closer.
Oh, okay, yeah, Ken's got property in the county.
Across the street.
Yeah.
A little closer. But we're an aging population of volunteers, and when you load up all that stuff and transport it, it really, it's very difficult for our volunteers to do that. I mean, there were people, David was out there, was that fun?
I think you'd make part of the aging community.
Not that you're hardworking.
You've lost my support.
But I mean, you know, it is, it is difficult, and it does present a hardship, being able to burn on the course.
Oh, we got to do one.
Which certainly helped us quite a bit. I think the Elks has been a good community. I think when people come into this committee or look at this committee, you can only say we have an Elks Lodge.
You mentioned that there were three days in the spring and two in the fall, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have those dates?
That would be, that would be dependent upon the weather. I mean, you know, what we would do is gather our refuse, and then the times are good to burn.
Do you know if it would be like in a March thing then?
It could be like now.
Okay.
This is actually spring cleanup time, end of March.
You have a gentleman with you.
I'm Greg Glasson, I'm new trustee of the Elks, been a member four or five years now, and I've kind of been in charge of this, and Tony Perkins mentioned ice storms, wind storms. We had a lot of that this year, and there's much more down this year. I've been out there working in December and January by myself, picking up stuff so that we could get to the smaller stuff, and it's, there's a lot out there for us to haul off, or for you, if you were going to haul it off.
Let me tell you what $3,000 looks like. It's a lot.
I saw that pile, I helped pick some of it up, so I know. It would just make things so much easier for us to have to haul it all off.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Greg, and I empathize with you, like I said.
And I think where we got in, got wrong, we cut down a big pine tree this year that's been dead for three or four years, on Number Three, close to the road, and we had one behind the practice green, and rather than, we hauled a lot of it off, but we were trying to burn it there, trying to get it in that stump, and it was closer to the road, and we made a mistake probably doing that. We should have hauled it back to the back of our course, where nobody knew, and that's what we're asking to be able to do, maybe a couple times a year, very back.
Police chief smiling. No, I, I.
I knew I shouldn't have been trying to, I hear pulling that date.
It is a pain to deal with.
Really is.
I saw it three years ago, I know it's a tough thing to deal with, and I talked to Paula Garcia back then, three years ago, and I said, Paula, I said, okay, I can't come to you every year and do $3,000 worth of removals.
And we're not asking you to do that.
No, 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 I understand that, but what I'm trying to explain to you, this council can go ahead and vote on that, and that takes care of your local ordinance, but the first call that I D E M is involved in, they'll be down here talking to you, because they have to give you the approval also, right?
This council can't approve her request. The Board of Works has to approve her request.
The Board of Works.
This council can amend the ordinance so that the Board of Works has a different or workable, clearer, or whatever standard, if it wants to do that. But even if Board of Works can approve, nothing the city does affects I D E M's approval or rejection process, and that's a completely different process. And so I don't want anyone to leave the Board of Works. If someday we check that box for somebody, you need a special exception, I don't want someone to presume. I don't want someone to presume that they can just go to IDEM and burn anything else.
Yeah, yeah, well, we found that out.
No one is exempt us.
That's right. That's right.
Well, and let me go, there's a permit process through IDEM.
There is.
Did you have to go through that? So that you have to get permitted through them is like, is what they're trying to say before you were able to.
They're going, they're just going to go to rule, you can't, because they're not local. They don't know the circumstances. You, you guys do. So they'll just say, no.
Well, but what we're saying, Greg, is they do have the statutory power to do that in one call and they shut you down and fine you is, is the way that works. The, the, I would help go through the process, Jan, with, if, if the council agrees to an interpretation that your situation covers the ordinance interpretation, go back to the Board of Works with that and see, we get the local part of it taken care of and then try to help you with the, the IDEM part. But it's probably going to be difficult. They don't have anywhere in the state where they're burning within the incorporated areas.
Within the state, anywhere.
Yeah. Chief Butler, you know that.
I would have all due respect to you and, and to the Elks. And I've enjoyed it a long time myself. But I'd have, I'd be hard pressed to support something that allows burning in the city lands. I mean, it just hasn't happened for thirty years and we're going to be, I think we are opening a... I mean, everybody can have a special circumstance and I, I don't know what the best answer is, but the minute we allow burning, just knowing what the reaction we have to other exceptions that we make, the, the people that will come forward with complaints of irritants and things, even though it's just wood, there's a lot of people that don't tolerate that. So, or don't tolerate it well. I, I struggle with this one because you guys are good stewards of the city. There's no question about that. The history's there.
Well, and what was it? Was it a, is it in a year or was it a year and a half ago, Lenny, where the county just went through this over on Park Road?
I think probably a year and a half.
Year and a half, the school and I DTEC, and they had to impose legislation. Because the, that's where the split is. Park Road is one side of it, the high school side's city, the other side's county. And they had to impose some legislation to extend the no burning ordinance that went, I think, right over to Sweet Young Road, you know, around that area because of the, the school and such.
I had one more question. I noticed on the map, the, the three locations you're trying to stay away from the streets. Did, I don't know if you maybe already mentioned, because you said something about the fire department observing it while it was going on. Have you talked with Chief Butler and has he reviewed the locations or has any?
I don't know if he's aware of the locations. I presented it to the Board of Works. He did not look at this.
Did not.
Okay. I'd be really interested in knowing what Chief Butler's input was as well prior to supporting any amendment to an ordinance. But I am open to.
Well, initially, the initial call, when I talked to him out there, when they said they had some, some damage, some, some dead trees, that was a gray area in the emergency burning. And so I, I told him at that time to come to the Board of Works and ask. Once you said that you want to do scheduled burning, it's no longer an emergency burning. You're planning a burn effect. So, so that wipes out what the state statute says that fits the bill of an emergency burn because you're scheduling, it's now a maintenance burn. If you call IDEM to, to get a state, they're not going to allow that unless you forego a whole bunch of other steps. One of them would be to ascertain an air curtain like Mr. Belcher had to do south of town and what they did on three hundred. Which where you dig a hole, you have these blowers come in, you fill the hole, you light it, and the blowers blow in and it burns it off. And with the extra oxygen, there's little to no smoke. And, and that's what IDEM will pass as the exception for, for open burning. So you'd have to contract a, an air curtain. So I'm not sure what the air curtain costs versus a tug grinder, either way. But like I said, once, once you said you want to schedule this, it's, no longer fits the state statute as an emergency burn. It becomes a maintenance burn. And now it's an inconvenience of, of monetary value and not an emergency, the way the state statute's written.
Thank you for that clarification.
Hope that helps.
Didn't help us much.
No, no, but I mean, I, you know, I, I didn't write, I, I didn't write the law.
And no, thank you for the clarification.
Andy, does it specify anywhere a timeframe? Because he's right. We have had periods of high winds. So I could see this one time falling under that emergency situation, but not going forward. But, you know, how far removed are we from those winds? I mean, I know we still have stuff down from it. It wouldn't solve the problem long term, but, you know, it, it does, we've had those high winds.
There's no timeframe in your works. If you're asking what the administrative code says in their definition, it only says caused by a natural disaster. There's no code to the definition of emergency burn.
And we did experience a lot more damage this spring because of all of those high winds. There was much more damage than we've ever had before. I mean, we had several truckloads.
So how's the current situation then as far as what you have left to burn? Are you up to par or do you?
No, we still have some.
We have a pretty good sized pile out there. We're going to have to haul off someplace if we can't burn it. And we still have about five or six holes to clean up yet from leaves, sticks.
Is that typically what you've done in the past, that just moving it somewhere else to burn? Maybe you mentioned that.
Typically, we've been burning on the course.
Oh, okay. So you have.
It's been happening.
Okay.
They, they fessed up the other day.
Yeah, it's been happening. I mean, you know, we try to be careful and we have been. This was the only complaint we had. And we got caught.
We had a complaint the other day. There it is.
Anybody who wants some great big pine stumps, you can come get them. There's a bunch of them out there stacked.
Like I said, now we do haul to volunteer, one of the Elks members' volunteer ground out of Abbot County. So, but it is really difficult. So, well, thank you for your time.
Well, I have one question here. Do we have a chipper coming up for auction?
Um, not that I know of.
No, we know of. Okay.
We got two of them. Nope.
Yeah, we'll have to check into that. Unfortunately, we have to be some changes in our budget. So, thank you for your time. If you would change your mind, please let us know.
Well, just one, one question. You guys are a nonprofit, it's some 501(c)(3). Have you reached out to some of the youth? I mean, you're talking about labor. I mean, you know, like the softball, soccer, they're always looking for projects. I mean, you could probably get these kids.
I just found out from one of the, we did have some younger people there with their parents and found out that Amy Lifeblood does a volunteer thing, that the kids have to have so many hours of community volunteer, community service. So I will reach out and.
You guys are providing scholarships. It makes sense for, you know, reach out to that.
Something we hadn't thought about. That's a great idea. We've been trying to do, get more youth involved.
That guy right back there, the wrestling team, they do a lot of that too, don't they?
Yeah, we've had their wrestling team come help us.
Help us with peers and things.
With peers and things. We try to support. They're a good group. They're teaching these kids some valuable lessons. They just don't include wrestling.
What about community corrections? Through probation.
And we had a very nice turnout, but, you know, and, and I don't know how many times I've, you can, uh, Mr. Mills is property. Can't, I can't continue, we can't continually to burn there all the time. I mean, it's going to be full. And yet that will be very, you know.
Our problem's not getting it cleaned up. Who'll get the help to get it cleaned up? Our problem is what to do with it. That's, that's killing us.
If you, if you had the equipment, would you, would you have people capable to run a chipper?
Oh, my, yes. Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, we could probably find people that would.
Why don't, why don't we get a fundraising situation going for that?
That'd be nice, but we've had fundraising things for pumps that went out and golf carts that we need, add new bores, roofs.
Well, yeah, it's, it's never, it's, it's, things have just, you know, it's just, the Elks has not had good maintenance, I wouldn't say, as far as it's, things that have needed to be taken care of for quite a while until this current board has come in.
Jan, you know, the stuff I told you I found in my dad's office when he passed away and all it's clear back to when it was the country club, they've had financial problems from day one. It's been a hand to mouth situation from day one. I was trustee for a while. We were always scrambling for, you know, we had kitchen. We'd done, it closed down and had the community come to our parade there.
That's why our golf course is important. It is our source of income. The kitchen doesn't make any money. That's a loss. That's a losing proposition. That's only open for the members and community to, them to be able to come out to the Elks and enjoy the Elks and maybe think they want to be members out there because it is a nice location, the view is beautiful. And that, that is a losing proposition. That's not a money maker at all, really, at all. The, the golf course is our money. And we do lots of other things, don't we? We don't just do golf, the golf course. We do, you know, sell tickets for drawings and having a, a drawing, a, a brawl. So I understand what you're saying. And, you know, Tom's father was a charter member of the golf course, Rochester Country Club. I don't know if your dad might have been too, although. And it would be, it would be a shame to lose it. So thank you so much. And like I said, maybe you'll ponder the question and.
Lenny, what, what's a reconditioned chipper run?
About ten thousand.
Ten grand?
For halfway decent one.
Ten grand would get them in the business? If you want to start a campaign, I'll be your first one. I'll do a thousand dollars towards your chip. Well, I mean, it, you're right, it is important. My dad was a trustee for a lot of years.
I think a lot of people have been trustees out there.
So, but if you want to start that up, I'll start a contribution.
Thank you so much.
Well, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
It's better than having, being three granddad stuff hauled away.
Well, especially dad to do it every year. Says it's not a one time thing. But thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your time. We didn't mean to take this much time for this, so we go to the.
Well, I'm serious, Greg. You find nine other people, let's get a chipper.
Can you tell them approaching the community foundation at all?
No, we usually give them. Give them grants for the funds.
Grants, I mean.
Yeah, they have their, I think it's their community grant program that they, they offer. I mean, it's open to a wide variety of things. So it's certainly something for you guys to, to look at.
And I don't know if any of you play golf, but the courses, the last two or three years, it's just fabulous. I mean, we have a group of people that have really, this, it's, boy, it was really getting seedy there for a while, you know. And the time I came on, it, it wasn't just us. We've got a good group of people and the course is really nice. We have people come and just go, who didn't really realize this was this nice of a course. And it's really, this last forty-five years, we've really pushed to make it. It's small, it's nine holes, but it has its purpose in this community. You can bring your kids out to play and you're not going to bother people, you know. It's a small course to start on for the younger kids. The older people like it because it's not so far. You don't have to hit so hard. You don't have to drive so far. It's just nice to have it. And there's a place for it in this community. And I'd like to keep it there.
I think all that history may have served you well in the community translation, seriously. Community grant program.
That would be Brian Johnson. Yeah.
Got a shot. Thank you.
I think it's worth a good try.
Oh, that takes us down into department reports.
Good evening. Rochester Fire Department following calls. Structure fires, two in Richland Township, one in Rochester Township. Vehicle fires, one in Richland Township. Field fires, two in Rochester Township. Burnings fires, one in Rochester Township. Auto fire alarms, two in the city, one in Rochester Township. Mutual aid fires, one in Argus. Gas leaks, two in the city. Accidents, two in the city, two in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township. Medical assists, fourteen in the city, eight in Rochester Township. Two in Newcastle Township, three in Richland Township. CO checks, two in the city. Rescues, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Service calls, four in the city for a total of fifty-three calls, and we did one drill. Depending on your questions, that concludes my report. Any update on our engine?
They'll start fabrication at the cabin chassis in, in Shrelott, Michigan. It's probably in the May, first part of June. There'll be six weeks in the process there once it gets significantly down the line. Spencer will then jig the frame and they'll start the body construction. We'll go for a final inspection, cabin chassis, probably mid-July, end of July. And then it'll get moved to South Haven to meet up with the body that's being fabricated. Spencer at South Haven. And then we'll take deliveries September.
Okay, it's coming along. Any questions for the chief?
We are meeting Thursday out at Wilson's Body Shop. We're going to start looking at some battery operated rescue tools. We have hydraulic tools in the rescue truck now. They're tethered to a hundred foot line. If we have a vehicle roll off such an embankment, well, we do have a portable pump that has twenty-five feet of hose. The batteries, now with the lithium, eighty or sixty volt batteries have, have come a long way where you can actually do a complete extrication without changing your batteries out. So that opens up our options. We've all seen the, the videos of all the high, the accidents this winter. We do cover thirty-one from one ten hour way down to Specks Corner, plus we have a hundred and ten square miles within the county. So we're, we're going to look at these, these rescue tools. But if anyone's interested, I think my morning session canceled. The vendor had a family emergency, but at one o'clock, I'm going to have a vendor come. We go to Wilson's. We're actually going to cut a couple cars up with the battery operated tools if you're inclined to come out and take a look at that. I love them.
When is that, Tom?
It'll be Thursday.
Next week.
This week.
This week.
This week.
This week. This Thursday, twenty-eighth, at one o'clock, at Wilson's Body Shop.
Don't make me skeptical of the batteries and having the.
Um, I, I, I was a skeptic for years, but right now, most of the permits around us, Warsaw, Peru, South Bend, they, they have them. And they've found that they, they've actually been able to use these tools in other implications. We have a downed fireman that's trapped. Before, we couldn't bring in the hydraulic tools. But with, if, if this is just a handheld battery operated tool, so if he's trapped, I can go in with the spreaders and lift debris off of him if I have to. So it really kind of opened up outside the box thinking with these. My, my placement on this would probably be in the new engine with the extra storage compartments because the rescue truck by far would be the first truck in the accident. The engine would be second and having these extra set of tools, like I said, multi-car vehicle accidents or if we have more than one. We do have the old setup too that's on the backup engine that operates up its own small gasoline powered pump. The, the rescue has electric over hydraulic for the main and then the portable unit is gasoline over hydraulic. So like I said, plug and play with these batteries. Have an extra set on the truck that'll get trickle charged the whole time. So in the event, it is an extended extrication we can swap out. I said, they've been out for years when Chase, when you were on, they were out. At the time, the tools weren't proven, but with the technology and lithium batteries, it's now the time to, to start looking seriously at this tool.
I'm going to come out at one o'clock and if you make me a believer, we're going to call them and see if they make a weed eater. I'm going to come out at one o'clock, and if you make me a believer, we're going to call them and see if they make a weed eater. I hope you have to get a battery-powered weed eater.
Well, if you haven't tried a sixty-volt.
Maybe.
They're a little bit bigger, so it's not very typical. But then again, the one I'm looking at too is made by Frank Belt Raisin, the E F P bought from us. So, they're making them locally in Belt Raisin. So, if we have a problem, we can go there. And then they're using the Waltz Battery, so it's not proprietary battery. Some of the manufacturers have their own proprietary batteries. So, like Percy, it's like a five-hundred-dollar replacement battery versus going to Lowe's, Home Depot, and ordering one for a hundred bucks. So, there's a little bit of a difference in that.
Okay.
But we're looking at both. Like I said, the other tool is the first tool that has its proprietary battery, but it has its features over the other two. So, we're going to look and really be scrutiny of both of these and try to get the best.
I look forward to seeing.
All right, thank you.
Chief shots?
Oh, good evening. From February, we had a total of seventeen accidents. One of those were personally injured. We issued seventy-seven warnings. Seventy-six were for traffic on only one city ordinance. We are already starting to ram up our spring ordinance enforcement, making sure people stay on top of debris and trash. And it's going to be moment season here before too long, so we'll be hitting those weed ordinances and grass ordinances pretty heavy here in the next month or so. There were told eighty-seven offenses, thirty-eight traffic, forty-four criminal, five juvenile, forty-eight case reports, five hundred and forty-seven calls for service. We got lockdowns last few months, didn't we? Yeah, we didn't have it, John.
Does that have anything to do with the new judge?
No, no, no. We broke a window and they could call us. Ten tow vehicles, thirty-two people incarcerated. And then you have to try and put people a lot more. Yeah, buddy, you walk up to a window and break out and say, there you go, stop calling. We did get a board in finally. Came in. Couple of weeks ago, we've already got it decal by Chambers. And it's up in Columbia City right now. Cops are getting everything installed, lights and sirens and all the fun stuff. It'll probably take, it'll probably have three or four weeks before we get it back.
Just because it's in the queue?
Yeah, yeah. And it takes, I mean, they have stages and that one, they've had the stuff in stop. Yeah, waiting for the car to show up, and they've got other vehicles they're doing in the process. So, they said, whenever you get it, bring it up, and we'll get to it when we can. And it beats fire trucks, but it's all I really care about.
Well, my truck comes, it comes with all the stuff on.
That's all I have once again. I just have any questions for Chief Shots?
Thanks, Andy.
From the Four Street Project, H I S is cutting grade sidewalks and certain grain even there up close and flatter. A E B, they did twenty-two hundred feet of curb last week in two days. So, on the north side, the curb is in. They started pouring sidewalk.
You know, that's amazing. Ever since Mr. Heidi's parents here at the last council meeting, man, he's got kicked in gear out there. Thank you, sir.
They started pouring sidewalk this morning. They started just east Prairie Hills Drive, and they put in five hundred and twenty feet today. So, and they was moving forms tonight.
That's pretty good. Yeah, yeah.
So, they're moving right along.
And we have our meeting Thursday at ten o'clock for the update on everything?
Yes. Then the F W H A project, we sent out ten requests for proposals to the M dot pre-qualified consultants.
This is for the sidewalk grant that we received?
Or two. They have till April tenth to respond. We've talked to four, and I've got two letters back of that they're not going to be able to do it. So, they're not getting to submit any letters of interest. Then there's the Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Project. They've got two contractors. They're working on getting us quotes. I asked for them to come back by Thursday, the twenty-eighth, so.
So, they'll be ready for the board work at that time?
Yeah. And that's all I got.
Lighting project, now we've got everything finished that we had on our initial rounds on the lighting project?
Yeah, I gotta talk to her again because I found two the other day that we're having to change.
Anybody have any questions for Randy?
How many do we have on the list of the Fifty-Fifty?
Nine. We have nine.
I have a question, and I'm not sure if this would be for Randy, in regards to the sidewalk. Starting here at Fourth and Main or just after the travel office there, Ford, there's the blacktop and then there's the white lines. And I'm assuming that's the sidewalk designated walk area. Does, so is that the city being?
Casey's still here. I believe that was a grandfathered situation from.
They can't do that anymore. You can't asphalt a sidewalk anymore.
So, it technically is still city?
It's the city right away.
Okay. I've noticed when they get busy, just because I live on Fourth Street here, but I've noticed cars will park a lot all along there, and I've seen them park over that sidewalk several times. And I'm mostly just concerned, there are some handicap folks over in Precinct One closer to the city pole that I know personally that use those sidewalks. And so, that's been sort of a concern. I don't know really how to address it. But I don't, so I don't know if that's you or, okay?
It'd be Andy.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take care of it.
Well, actually, to knock on wood, once this project's finished on Fourth Street, we will be going back for another bite at the Community Corrections App, or Community Crossings App, not Community Corrections. We may be biting at it after the Community Crossings Grant Program to bring Fourth Street all the way up to Main Street. That project stops at the railroad tracksway. So, that's one of the items we have on our list.
There's a question on that?
Yeah. Just to do what you can with the money that you can obtain. Yeah.
Oh, it's looking nice. I'll say that.
Oh, man, thank you.
Developing really fast all of a sudden. Wes must have done something. I know you'd like to give Mr. E M B over there credit, but Wes, I mean, splatters us next thing you know. We've got curbs and everything for miles.
You didn't see him out there with the shovel, did you?
Thanks, Wes.
No, it is moving along very well. We'll have Mr. Heidi up here in a minute and perhaps see Sherwood's moved it out of his corner. But we do, we meet every, now, now, just kick back in, during the winter, we did before the winter, but we meet every Thursday at ten o'clock at E N B for a construction meeting and an update on everything and how it's progressive. It's moving in a direction. Anything else? Lynn Connolly, Street Department in Parks.
We've been raising storm drains on Tinted Jefferson.
I'm glad you finished that statement. I thought you were going to tell me you've been raising it or something.
Well, that's inevitable. We've been working on replacing this invaded signs. Pretty much got the west side done. We're moving these.
Lenny, can you tell us, the council ran out, how many signs we have replaced?
I would say about a hundred and seventy-five of them altogether.
Street signs, stop signs, speed signs. You've upgraded everything.
And we're going to continue east and keep moving east as we tack a section at a time. We've been out patching holes, not picking up yard debris, bags, oak leaves, brush, cleaning storm drains. We replaced metal on our lower of the shed that's been damaged over the years. We got our quota filled with assault. It's all mixed in the sheds full. We got the sweeper out and we're cleaning up the streets in the west side of the town. That's all I have for the street. Any questions?
Chipper and leaf machine?
Yeah, I got the chipper's out, and usually about three days, we can cover the whole town. And then we, like I said, that crew goes, do you want mine? We're patching. And then we got the vacuum machine out, roughing through out the whole city.
And we've got a lot of weeds sitting out there.
I alternate every week. One week, I'll start out the lake and come back towards town. And another week, I'll start on the west side and towards the east side.
I already know these answers. This is for the downtown.
I'm a three one.
Okay, yeah, I directed you here, bud, okay?
I'm not a real one. That's all I have for the street. Any questions on that?
Good job. Lenny, anybody got anything for lunch? Thank you. And I like your new shirts, too. They're pretty nice, bud.
Thanks. I was a hard resident. Much going on. Nobody's back to work yet, and they're going to start back up Monday. But my objective, word, and this is no reasonable order of doing this, some stuff that I got on my mind and thought of them down, was picking up the sticks, removing the leaves around the mountain and away from the basketball court, opening up and cleaning all the restrooms. And on that note, I'm going to, it'll probably be next weekend before I open up the restaurants because we're still in some cold climatic weather.
Yeah, I was asked that last week.
So, I'm sorry about the inconvenience.
They're winterized right now.
Yeah, I'd like to overlook that now, but then the table, I don't have pipes free of, so. It might be next weekend, they'll be able to, I'll go on, clean, maintain.
The pavilion looks very nice.
Yeah, it did turn out nice. It looks good.
Want to make sure, too, that we pick your ticket list up and contact our gentleman who's finishing the A D A, this golf course part of the A D A.
We've been, we're going to put out the tables that have been in storage, do maintenance on all the equipment. The baskets packed up for all the weather on the disc hall. Do a walk-around on all the parts for a safety check on all the equipment. Put out one of the trash bins that was split up, make a sweep of the park with the vacuum machine. That's about all I have to have. And then we purchased two new park trucks, one for the golf maintenance and one for the park department. So, as we get more people working, they all can have their own vehicle to drive.
Have you had an opportunity to take a look and see what the winter has done to our fence around Slidney Hill?
It still looks good.
Good. And the reason I ask, a lady told me her son was prevented from flying out into one of those trees by that fence, so. It's doing what it's supposed to. I just want to make sure if there's any dents or anything.
It looked fine. I was supposed to buy there the other day, and it looked, it looked good.
Great. Anything for Lenny? Thank you, Lenny. Good job.
I had an extensive last month. What was I saying? All right, my lab had normal plant testing. I ordered my first load of lungenon sulfate. That's for our phosphorus removal project that we just completed. So, that'll be here finally tomorrow. Our lab analysis report for the month is complete. I just finished the lab, man application report. I installed new gas cylinder scales for our disinfection season, which starts April first. I'm installing a new effluent meter. Our, in our plant, calibrations on the meters for twenty nineteen are complete. I had Thorpey move here to give me some quotes on some new meters and charts. Last upgrade was an O nine, so we're way behind times. Bio tower, clarify, number two is now back online. We are training right now for our allen pumping, which we're going to start Friday. That's for our phosphorus removal. I fixed light over our aeration tank. We replaced that with LED. I set up my meeting with Crosby Construction for April eleventh for my next expensive project, for my digesting project. We sent our backup to West Side Sales in South Bend for a hundred-plus point inspection. We cleaned our final contact tank, prepare for disinfection season. I just finished my anal pretreatment inspection report to I D M. That's for twenty eighteen. My collections are in normal locates. I did have one major backup this last month on Park Road. It was blocked between Thirteenth Street and the school. That was called by Roots and Grease. Our backer truck is now back from Craig's. It's finally back online. And our Aqua Truck, Aqua Tech Truck is now back online. Blacker Complex, they'll be hooking into the lift station, which just got approved last week. We're still waiting for our air vac station B pump to arrive. It's the original pump, broke finally from nineteen eighty-eight. That should be here within the next week.
Okay, so, you didn't get it, right?
Correct. We cleaned Arbor Woods and Eleventh Street lift stations. And currently around the shop, we're cleaning up, gather, not in specific option, but basic.
Anything for Marcus? If you would, Marcus, goddamn, nine o'clock Friday morning, why don't you come in and take a look at the infrastructure suggestions for the next projects we've discussed? Let's see. Can you give me some input there on what we're going to do? Nine o'clock. All right, thank you very much. Gary? You don't have anything. Oh, my gosh. Whoa. He's been on vacation.
Yeah. The monthly duties for water department for the month of February. We read meters, did orders, repair, replace bad meters, did locates, backwash the photo beds, did shut offs, swept them off the plant. We started our asset management and inventory program, which that is complete except for one thing I got to do with Shada. We put together a new desk for Kristen City Hall, took her old one out, put a new one in. Randy Carr and I also filed a walking trail for Lenny when they're cleaning them down, cleaning the vehicles, reorganizing the meter room. And then digs that were performed, we fixed a six-inch water main leak at eleven twenty-five East Ninth Street. And we also fixed an eight-inch water leak at sixteen thirty-eight Slicker Street, which is a super apartment system that's back from that. And there's a whole list of call-ups. You don't need me to go over them. I'll take any questions you have on them.
Should note that both Marcus and Gary are working on their infrastructure project list, much like over on North Street. I believe you've pretty much earmarked. Stop me if I'm saying something out of school, but we believe Ludbrook Street's the area zero in on for our next. We've had, we've had lots of things telling us we need to probably do that. And have we?
Haven't got any information back yet.
Okay, why don't you stop by and see what you're working on this expensive. Anybody got any questions for Eric?
Thank you, Marcus, too.
Did you hear that?
No.
I don't know. Apparently, you know something.
Go up there.
Not to give you guys. Not to give you guys part of your big head, but the two, I guess, rookie superintendents, those two, you just mentioned, doing a great job. You guys really are. Marcus, you brought him along, so.
There we go.
Everybody's doing a good job, but you two are coming right on. Good job. Okay, that takes care of the department heads, reports and committees. We've got a new committee report, the Lake Manito Association. Damon and I were talking the other day. We hear from RDP and we hear from the redevelopment commission. Well, LMA is one of our biggest jewels in Lake.
Probably just thinking, I wish I could have another meeting to go to, right?
I'm not too old to volunteer at the Alps every day for a moment, you heard.
That was a pretty good shot, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, not as good as one you gave. I do need to point out, it had nothing to do with 4th Street. It had his drought, they're doing a package job. The workers were doing it.
That's not true. They all refer to him as Mr. Wonderful.
So I'm here for Lake Association tonight. And I'll take my luck and won't be, I'll make it free, but the purpose, the mission of the Lake Association is to promote further understanding of Lake Manito and watershed and protect, restore and manage the ecosystem of which it is a part. In 2006, when the hydrola hit the lake, the state closed the lake and started spraying the lake and took it back to virtually no weeds. So there was a period there where not much was done with Lake Manito. Really didn't need to be, you know, it was in their hands. We spent over $200,000 last year testing water, dredging, working on water quality. We have about 50% participation in the landowners around the lake in our association. We realize that we need to do a lot better than that. We've changed our due structure some, but we feel like with little education, people understand really what we're doing, we will have better participation in the association.
David, I don't want to put you on the spot if you can't answer this one, but how many members do you have?
A little over 300. We went last year. So we're looking to getting out and doing a lot more education this year. We've got a dredging project we finished up last fall. You probably saw it over at that grand ditch there to be in our launch. The weeds have come back. If anyone remembers the weeds before the hydrola and all that chemical treatment, the weeds in Lake Manito is a shallow lake and become quite prevalent. And were really a hindrance to property owners around the lake. The weeds have come back. We've spent a lot of time and money monitoring the weeds as they come back because clearly we need a good established weeds to keep that lake clean. The weeds have come back with a vengeance. So this year, we're looking at treating the high travel areas. So as the boats go around, we will be chopping weeds and doing some of that. So we'll, in addition to that, we're going to have a program where individuals are permitted to take care of 645 square feet at their own property. So we'll have kits available to people around the lake if they want to participate in that. We're doing a fault order to save pricing for everyone. So if they want to trade around their peers and everything to control their swim areas. But we understand the value of keeping that lake as good as you can get it. With all the watershed, we've seen in the paper in the last week of we're teaming up and working with the soil conservation folks and working on looking at the watershed and what conservation efforts we can use to help the settlement inflow coming in from Rain Creek. That'll be an ongoing study. But we need to make sure we're doing what we can to keep the property values and the desirability of that lake at the most. You know, when you look at quality life of Fulton County and the city of Rochester, Lake Manito is a very big part of that. And we're working hard to make sure that we can keep it what it is today and improve it more. So just appreciate a couple of minutes to bring you guys up to speed. I told Ted I'd be more than happy to come back every couple, three months if there's something new to keep you updated on what we're doing. Feel free to give me a call at any time. We actually meet in these chambers on Thursday at 7:00 if you ever want to attend. That's all I have on Lake Manito, unless you guys have questions.
Now, and the lake is a very important, not only a jewel for our community and drawing people here, but it's a large part of our tax base. Folks, you know, we hear people, it's an update once in a while. It's probably no mission to the past. Certainly look forward to you doing that, David. It doesn't have to be you, it could be Kenny, it could be anybody, just keeping this kind of, it looks like, everybody agree that's probably a beneficial place.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anybody have any thing for David?
Any questions on 4th Street while I'm standing here?
I didn't want to put you on the spot, but things aren't moving very well, let's be fair.
Things are moving. It is anticipated. Weather cooperates and we have an asphalt plant that's going to be firing up. It got a power surge today and took out some circuit boards, but we're still hopeful to have that open and calibrated tomorrow. If that happens, we'll have asphalt run the curbs on Thursday. We'll start removing south side on Friday, get those curbs in next week. We're anxiously awaiting the maintenance of the roads a little wider, help everybody from traveling public to the city. You know, as long as the weather's good, you know, thank you to Gary and Casey for keeping things checked out in front of us. Weather cooperates, we get a fair amount of work done.
And Chase shots, kind of keeping an eye on the traffic situation.
Trying.
Some people think it's a racetrack even, but you've got people standing in the middle of the street. We'll watch that and go carefully. The, just kind of shocked you, I had a call from one of the residents on Ohio today to say, hey, things are moving on really good. It's looking good. I said, are you really the resident or did you just break in to use the telephone?
Well, that's all you have, all of your center.
Thanks, David. See you Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay, area planning commission.
I have nothing to report this night. We didn't have a meeting.
That'll be your report next time, won't it?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Goodman.
Fedco. Fedco didn't meet more so. It was, it wasn't a short meeting, but we're not allowed to report. We did talk about the contract services. As you know, the, we were getting ready to go back to the county to find out if they were going to fund the next six months, and I believe that they have.
They've fully funded it.
Fully funded Fedco, so we're funded for this year. The business planning class is coming up. They'll have orientations on the 20th and the 28th of this month. We've had a lot of people go through that and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I can get that. It was, we talked about it in the meeting, it was a big number, I just didn't jot it down. What we did mostly was work on our annual meeting. We were going to have an annual meeting open to the public to kind of market Fedco, to let everyone know what we do, because, you know, a lot of people ask, why do we need Fedco? So we're hoping to answer that question. We went through a PowerPoint. Did we, you know, the members get feedback on it? We made some, you know, proposed some changes. One of the things we talked about doing is instead of having one large meeting, we would schedule a meeting in each community in the county so that, you know, people don't have to travel very far to come see the PowerPoint and the presentation. And that was pretty much it. Any questions?
Just to add to that, John's aware of this, Mr. Bowley over in East Peoria, he's moving along at his own pace, but he is looking at making another acquisition in the community, so getting himself pretty well established, although he has not broken ground at the site yet. But that's, that's coming. He's getting himself entrenched here, which was good to see. The other piece of information we had, we heard from Brad Cashaw, the senior vice president with Deans last week, and Deans had said, listen, we've decided to liquidate some assets. So if you have somebody who's interested in that plant, call me directly. And that's the first time they've stepped out to do that. Things have not been going very well for Deans. You can keep an eye on Wall Street Journal or anything, and they're liquidating some assets. Okay, any other questions on Fedco? Okay, Kerry's not here on the redevelopment commission. We'll say there was a redevelopment commission meeting since the last council meeting, and we are investigating the cost to complete the road out of Apache Drive from the area there in front of Schnabel Tears and where the bank is out to 14. Making the street there all the way up to 14 with drainage and the end of the street and getting some pricing on that, so, right there. We believe that part of developing that area back there is having an entrance and an exit, two points of entrance there, one off of 14 and then of course one off of 25. So that's, that's in the process. You heard about wings, et cetera? Is there anything else cooking, Casey, that we missed?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, takes us down to the park tour of Mason's Hill. Didn't make that meeting, Shada, were you at that meeting?
No.
Okay. The BCA and Council on Aging, Marty?
BCA was normally a meeting tomorrow, but that meeting has been canceled for lack of activity. And our Council on Aging meeting was a short one as transpo director and the RSDP director were both attending other meetings. So Georgia reported from Council on Aging that she has had a meeting with Jillian, the new director at the chamber. They have presented the budgets to the United Way. And fire marshal made a visit to the facility with two very small items that needed attention, and those have been taken care of. So currently, we are looking for a board member. And even with the inclement weather of February and the days of no school, which always lowers the number of trips, they still.
You want a drum roll on this?
No.
Big number, I got a feeling.
No, it's still over 3,100 trips for the month of February.
Isn't that amazing?
Which is astounding. And Gary, in a prior meeting, you had asked about the travel vouchers, and that program is not in place anymore, but Area 5 preschool children, there may still be some scholarships at the community foundation that they do. But the travel voucher program is no longer in existence.
3,100 trips, Marty, that is totally amazing. How many buses have we sold?
There are 16 vehicles.
Wow. All volunteer drivers, Jerry?
No, they're paid.
Are they paid?
They're paid.
That's a, that's a lot of trips and a lot of miles.
It is a lot of trips.
Any questions for Councilman Smith? Thank you. Solid waste and animal adoption, Councilman Thompson?
I don't have anything for animal adoption. For the solid waste, here it goes. The recycling center shipped 77 tons of recyclables with a value of $4,122.93 for the month of January. The county of Landville received 33,529 tons of waste in 23 working days for an average of 1,458 tons per day. Fulton County accounted for 5,341 tons. The rest of Indiana contributed 10,175 tons. 13 tons of out of state trash collected, and the host fee for the month was $43,624.80. The county host fee for the month was $14,094.37. Since the last meeting, it sold 236 worth of bags. That brings the total of that to 5,911. So far, we've collected $3,151 for disposal of all kinds. Stacy touched base with O and R. We're actually going to go ahead and uptake the building with new metal, and O and R's going to go ahead and take care of that for us. She got bids for three trucks from Shepherds, Mike Anderson, Curlin and Rochester Ford. And we ended up going ahead and approving the purchase for Rochester Ford. I think it's, yeah, $39,636. I forget now what kind of truck that we purchased. And they offered a $7,000 for a trade in on our 2007 Ford, and then $25 discount on all diesel oil changes. So that comes down to the price of $32,636.
Any questions for Councilman Thompson? Thanks, Chase. Freeboard, we don't have anything for that. John, Waterboard?
Waterboard, Derek sent me a really great minutes for the Waterboard, basically telling you that all is running well.
Is that fun? It's running from the well, right?
Running, exactly, running well. Derek does a good job of that. He said that was basically all we've got to talk about because, hey, everything's going good.
That's what we like to hear.
Don't say anything about it. It's going smooth, working fine with no major problems, is what he gave me earlier to you. And that has it all. That's how that has everything.
I forgot to tell you, again, I don't want to forget, we were, some of us were walking door to door Sunday, Chase, Chase, and we ran into a guy from Warsaw, that's from Warsaw who was relocated here. He said, you guys got the best water of anywhere I have lived, even Warsaw. You guys have great water. So we, we, yeah. There's a pat on the back, it'll be right there.
Before, Jeremy, I do that pancake to sausage stickers for sale. It's a Saturday, especially if you're going, you know, on TV. Sports, the girls softball and the Fulton County Soccer League. So, hey, I got them right here.
Ladies and gentlemen, this was a non-actor spokesperson. Do you know about the ADA concerns, anything on the legal front? Oh, we do have an ADA.
One question. I want to make sure. With the inspections with Casey on all of our crews, are we good on this 4th Street?
Oh, the guys have been out there a lot.
Okay. When you get done with your inspections, would you please let me just like an update the transition plan?
Okay, anything, anything else? Andy, anything from the legal front? Thank you for your due diligence on the issues tonight. Anything else? All right, with that being the case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It was moved by Thompson, seconded by Smith, votes in favor, 5-0.